November 11th, 2020. This meeting is being televised by Trump's telemedia and being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020's order to suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law 38 and 18. And the March 15th order imposed strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. So here we are on Zoom. All right, that being said, our Kitter Road has been continued.
Yes, unfortunately, my engineer couldn't make it tonight, and I don't have the engineering responses to make it a productive meeting. So I've requested it be continued to you December 9th.
No problem. We're just letting everybody out on the TV land know that we'll be doing this on the 9th of December.
All right, I appreciate it. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. UPS. What do we have on this calling other than the just, just the MyLars?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, just the MyLars. I have a letter from Christina.
Go ahead.
So it's planning board file number 93-101 UPS parking expansion. Dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Arcatus, Arcatus USA Incorporated, consisting of 20 sheets dated December 20th, 2019 revised on August 18th, 2020. Sheet C12 revised on September 15th, 2020. A supplemental data report dated December 20th, 2019 revised on August 24th, 2020. A memo extended detention basin anti-clogging outlet design dated June 4th, 2020, and a traffic impact study dated January 2020. As a result of this review, the office's concerns have been sufficiently met and the plans have been revised accordingly. We recommend endorsement of the MyLars.
That being said.
That's Christina.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions? I wouldn't entertain a motion.
Don't move.
That was you, Mike?
Yeah.
I have a second. Donald stuck his finger up in the air. He's stuck.
I second, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll say aye, so that's unanimous. Well, this is kind of fun calling. You get to read the next stuff in because we got nothing but Stone Gate. And we're down to 314 Dunstable Road.
Yeah, so Mike Walsh isn't here tonight either. Tim, do you want me to read the legal ad to open up the public hearing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. The Chelmsford, sorry. The Chelmsford Planning Board will conduct a remote public hearing on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020 at 7:30 PM via Zoom meeting platform to consider the application of Dunstable Ledge LLC for a six lot definitive subdivision located at 314 Dunstable Road. The applicant requests definitive subdivision approval and applicable waivers under subdivision control law and the rules and regulations governing, I'm sorry, governing the subdivision of land in the town of Chelmsford. The project calls for the construction of a new dead end roadway and the construction of six new houses on six new lots. The site is located in the RB Residential Zoning District. The properties are approximately 10.9 acres as shown on accessories map, two, block four, lot one and two. Both parcels are located on the western side of Dunstable Makepeace Road in a but the Westford Town Line.
Do we have any letters from department?
Um, I don't. Yes, we do.
Hey, Henry, I want to punch in right up just to say Mike Walsh is having trouble signing in.
All right.
Oh, wait a second. Let me do that. I'm sorry, I got distracted reading. There's everybody.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good.
So you said you had some letters on this one calling?
I do. The first one comes from North Chelmsford Water District from Bruce Harper. Dear Board Members, North Chelmsford Water District has reviewed the applicant's proposal to construct six single homes off of 314 Dunstable Road. The North Chelmsford Water District will supply water with the full understanding that the applicant shall follow the rules and regulations of North Chelmsford Water District and the Chelmsford Fire Department requirements and agree to the following conditions. The single dwelling, the single dwelling will have straight lineal sleeved one inch water service for each unit with metered with metered with the R900 radio read water meters. That's a mouthful. Each unit will be charged an entrance fee of $5,000 at the single family. More than one unit rate, six in total. The new eight inch ductile iron water main will be looped from Dunstable Road to the existing six inch cast iron water main located on Stone Hill Road. This will eliminate any potential dead ends. The applicant shall install gate valves at each end and the intersecting easement and update the fire hydrant on Stone Hill Road. The applicant shall pay all costs. The North Chelmsford Water District will make sure that the applicants follow the details that are submitted on the drawings, proper depth of pipe, proper bedding and backfill materials, thrust blocks, et cetera. The applicant's engineer shall submit to the North Chelmsford Water District a detailed drawing of the wetland crossing, type of pipe to be used, type of freeze and corrosion protections, and the North Chelmsford Water District approval. The applicant must grant the North Chelmsford Water District a written descriptive easement with the rights to enter upon the purpose of upgrades, repairs, et cetera, from the public part of Dunstable Road through the proposed subdivision to the public part of Stone Hill Road. All materials, inspections, overhead, entrance fees, tapping of domestic water service, et cetera, will be coordinated through the North Chelmsford Water District. Sincerely, Bruce Harper. I'm sorry. I have one from fire. Members of the board, the Fire Prevention Office has reviewed the proposed subdivision plan for 314 Dunstable Road and finds the following. Hydrant locations shown on the plan are adequate. The Chelmsford Fire Department also requires a hydrant within 500 feet of every building for manual firefighting operations, which this property satisfies. Hydrants and fire protection equipment, excuse me, shall be free from landscaping or vehicle obstructions with a clearance of 60 inches to the steamer connection and 36 inches to the rest of the hydrant. Proposed access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles is adequate. The roadway and proposed bridge shall be capable of supporting 80,000 pounds, which is the GFW of the, I guess gross vehicle weight of the Chelmsford Fire Department ladder one. Snow storage shall not obstruct fire apparatus access. All fire protection features of all structures on the site shall comply with applicable sections of Massachusetts Building Code. This office would approve this plan with these conditions, and I ask the board to make this part of their approval process. I'm going to say, Katie, did you get Christina's? Because this one's just big, long technical.
Yes, I did.
Can we waive the reading of the engineering letter?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we can waive it. Does they have any, how about sewer? Does she have anything in there saying anything about sewer capacity?
Nope, that goes to the Board of Health, which is next.
All right.
All right, so then this one is to the planning board.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Yeah, there was a piece, so this is Christina Papadopoulos. There was a piece in my letter about sewer.
Oh. The sewer work will require permitting and applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system.
Number 10, Colleen.
It's the number 10. Thank you, thank you, Katie.
Oh, the project is subject to the 2020 sewer moratorium. They must design septic systems due to the current lack of sewer capacity. In 1997, the town's goal was to have the entire town connected to municipal sewer. At the time, the subdivision bylaw was amended to include the provisions in the event that the municipal sewer system is not available for reasonable connection of the subdivision. The proponent is to design and construct a dry sewer line for future use by the town. The town is working with Lowell DEP and EPA on plans to provide additional municipal sewer services in the future. The Engineering Division feels that the applicant should design and build a dry sewer line in the subdivision road. Is that the one you wanted, read Christina?
Oh, thank you, Colleen.
Okay, so this one is Board of Health, then. In reviewing the recently submitted proposal, proposed definitive subdivision plan to the planning board for six lot subdivision located at 314 Dunstable Road, the Board of Health conditionally approves such a plan pursuant to the provisions of GL Chapter 41, Section 81U pursuant to 310 CMR 15 Septic Systems Title V Regulations. The Board of Health will require stamp plans stamped by a professional engineer of a proposed subsurface disposal system for each of the six lots. The stamp plan must follow the Title V Regulations as well as the local Board of Health Regulations. Article 6 of the Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 200, Board of Health Subservice Sewage and Wastewater Disposal Groundwater Protection. In addition, the Board of Health has reason to believe that the property at 313, I'm sorry, 314 Dunstable Road historically was used as an industrial piece of property and that household as well as commercial materials were dumped on the property. The Health Department will require a Phase One Site Assessment pursuant to GL 21E to be performed on this property to verify environmental conditions prior to any subdivision into six single family lots respectively, Sue Rosa. That's it for me.
I'm glad you brought it back at home. All right, do we have somebody here to speak for the development? I'm assuming that's going to be you, Katie.
No, Mr. Chairman, Douglas DeShane representing Dunstable Ledge LLC. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. As I said, Douglas DeShane representing Dunstable Ledge LLC. Also with us on the call tonight, Katie Enright from Howard Stein Hudson, as well as David Guthrie from Dunstable Ledge LLC. As was stated in the notice, we are here this evening to discuss a definitive subdivision on property at 314 Dunstable Road. The property consists of two parcels totaling 10.87 acres. The land is in the residential B zone. There is currently existing on the property, a single family home, which is proposed to be removed. We are proposing to build approximately 698 feet of roadway with a cul-de-sac turnaround. And then we are proposing to subdivide six residential lots off of that new roadway, which will meet all of your rules and regulations with respect to both the roadway construction as well as the lots. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn it over to Katie, and she'll give you a more detailed review of the proposed project.
All right.
All right, good evening, everyone. Katie Enright with Howard Stein Hudson here tonight to talk to you about a six lot residential subdivision. I've pulled up the presentation plan that we've created to kind of help with the presentation tonight, being virtual. As Doug stated, the lot is 314 Dunstable Road. There is currently a single family house. It sits pretty far back from the street and a gravel driveway that goes there. Deep Brook passes through the site from north to south, and there's currently two pipes under the driveway that carry the brook through the site. There's also another small wetland, an isolated wetland that's locally jurisdictional as you go to the south end of the site. And then here, as you'll see on my subdivision plans, is the right of way from Stone Hill Road that comes into the southern portion of the site. The proposal as Doug stated is for six residential houses. They're single family houses. We were aware certainly of the sewer moratorium when we were designing this project. So we think an amount of test pits out there to determine that basically, you know, if we need to, if we plan on developing, the sooner than later, we would certainly need to put each of these homes on a subsurface disposal system. And you'll see that the grading and drainage plan reflects that in a preliminary fashion as far as the grading and sizing that we feel would be necessary for each of these single family homes. Also, we had prepared in the profile sheet, as Christina stated, for the sewer, potential for future sewer. We had shown a sleeve essentially going through this new culvert area so the sewer could be put in in the future. But we will be seeking a waiver from the requirement of doing both sewer and septic systems as we feel that's a little bit certainly redundant economically. Honestly, not, not very fair to the developer having there be no sewer here. So we'd like to either go one way or the other, certainly as we move forward, understanding that there is no sewer capacity at this time and the timing of the project. The layout of the project has very much been developed based on the locations of the wetlands and Deep Brook where this is a riverfront area. We're only able to look at 10% of the riverfront and the existing disturbances within the riverfront. And you'll see the 200 foot is here within the site. So we had to be very cognizant of, of essentially the length of the road and the placement of the homes on this project. We did look at a couple of different options, one of them being a cluster. But the road itself has to be very long to get out of the riverfront area and into the area that we would look to put. So you can see that the first house is set back essentially the same distance as the existing house that's out there today. And then there's five single family homes past that on a cul-de-sac. Now, what we've shown here is a, is a right of way extending to Stone Hill, but we didn't envision tying Stone Hill together. It was never our intention to create a loop road from Stone Hill through this site. We, you know, certainly are cognizant of our neighbors and, and want to show that, but understanding the way that the subdivision rules and regulations are written, we understand that we would have to leave a right of way to tie into that, whether it's needed for emergency access in the future, or if it's something that we want to consider now, or certainly for future construction. We also own a 5.26 acre parcel in Westford, so we've also shown a right of way into Westford. And at the next meeting, we'll have this area here designed to be able to show you what this piece of roadway would look like going towards the Westford property. The drainage for the site was tricky. We have areas throughout the site here, up front here, and then in this area here that we have designed for detention basins or infiltration basins. This out here is actually a pocket wetland due to the type of material and the water table that was out here. And this pond will accept flow as it comes from essentially this portion of the road out to this pond. We then created an infiltration pond here, which will be, again, water will be collected by deep sun catch basins, run into a sediment for bay and a detention pond here. I'm going to stop this share and actually share the site plan. I think it'll be a little bit easier to see the detail. So this is the pocket wetland here. This is a small infiltration pond here and a small infiltration pond here. And that captures all of our, our increase or all of our runoff that would increase due to the increased impervious surfaces and treat to meet the, to meet the stormwater management standards in Massachusetts. You can also see how many test pits we did out here. All the drainage test pits were witnessed by Christina Papadopoulos. And we, when we had the machine out there, did a significant amount of, of other test pits essentially to make sure that we were comfortable moving forward with the subdivision, understanding that there was no sewer, sewage capacity currently in town. So we wanted to make sure that we had the soil testing, at least in a preliminary fashion, to look for areas that we could do septic systems. This is the plan that just shows the utility and layout. We're looking to bring water in from Dunstable Road, and we will be looping that through to Stone Hill as requested by the North Chelmsford Water District. So we will show that on an upcoming revision. Department stated we have a hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac, one essentially in the middle, and there's already an existing hydrant out at Dunstable Road. We would also bring in gas and underground electric. And we're also proposing to do a sidewalk on, on one side of the road as we come around. So we'd be seeking a waiver for doing a sidewalk on both sides. This was designed under the minor street standards. I'm not going to get into too much of the detail, but our profiles are shown on the following pages. I believe we're only up to about, it goes from a 1% to essentially a 4% road. And as Doug stated, we're just under 700 feet long. Trying to think of anything else I missed. And so it's, it's pretty, it's pretty much a standard subdivision. I don't believe there's anything else I really need to tell you at this time. Certainly, we're open to questions and comments. And certainly, we'd be looking to continue so we could start to take care of any comments. We also want to commit that we'll be working again with Sue Rose, and I've been playing a lot of phone tag at the Health Department. We'll be working with the Board of Health regarding their concerns regarding the rumors regarding this property and the waste that might have been here at some point in time. So with that, Doug, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Or can I turn it back over?
No, we're happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Very good.
All right, we're running around the board. Mike Walsh.
There you go. I muted myself. Katie, what are the other, thank you, Katie. This is, I like the, I like the subdivision, the plan. What are the other waivers besides the sidewalk that you're looking for?
The only other waiver is to, is to construct the dry sewer at this time.
Okay. So are you putting in sloped granite curbing?
Correct.
And are you putting in lighting?
We haven't shown lighting yet. We certainly can show lighting in an upcoming revision.
That's the only, those are the only two items that I have. No, looks good. I think, I think it's a nice looking development. That's all I have, Henry.
Tim.
I don't have any questions at this time. It looks good.
Go on.
Yeah, Katie, what's the deal with the land that you're working with Sue Rosa on?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What's the deal with Sue Rosa and the land?
So there's been, I only have heard this based on messages we've been playing phone tag, but essentially a couple of, of local residents or abutters have been in to talk to her about this land collecting trash or junk historically. So she has some concerns related to that.
Okay. I have no question.
Mike Raesback.
Yeah, I do have some questions. I understand that you're looking for a waiver on putting the dry sewer line in, which I can understand from an economic point of view. On the other hand, I would certainly hope that this sewer capacity issue is relatively short term and that at some point in the not too distant future, the area would get sewered. And I wanted to know who would pay for putting the sewer line in.
Well, and so that's an interesting question, right? So we were, we had already surveyed this property, and it started doing conceptual plans when the sewer moratorium came into effect, which is why we did increased soil testing out here. It's not the developer, the developer's not sure on timing yet. Certainly, you know, our ears to the ground as to what's going on with the sewer. If you're going to go through the cost and expense of building septic systems for each of these homes, it wouldn't be the intention to tie into sewer until there was an issue with the septic systems that would require us to tie into sewer if sewer was then available. If this project doesn't decide to kick off for six months, nine months, a year to build the single family homes, then certainly we would go back to the drawing board and we wouldn't propose septic systems and we would put sewer in. Certainly, the issue is, is if you're going to put a septic system in, it's going to last, it should last for 20 plus years. And to go through that expense, you're not going to go through the expense of both at this time.
All right, well.
It's probably more of a question for Board of Health.
It, it might be, but, but my thought was, I don't recall our having in most of the parts of town let people hold on to their septic system as long as it was functioning. Now, obviously, if it stopped functioning, we, they generally required an immediate hookup. But I, I do, I would not envision a situation here in which the, you know, there simply would be no plan for sewer until somebody's system failed and then we had a panic. So I would strongly suggest that, that, that a sewer line, even a dry one, be put in as part of the project. And that's, that's really my one comment.
Hank.
Yeah, I think it's a good project. I think the sewage line is kind of redundant. I don't think it's needed at this time. I don't know if the town can enforce making them put it in, but I could see stubbing out each house for a septic line in the future out of the foundation. But other than that, I think it's a good project so far.
Nancy.
Yeah, a couple of questions for Katie. Katie, does this property connect to Stone Hill Road?
It does. This is Stone Hill Road right here. This isn't the developed part of it right here, but this is the right of way.
What was the rationale to access this property via Dunstable instead of Stone Hill, given that you have the brook in the middle that you have to cross?
That's a good question. It was never, it was never something that we had envisioned was connecting to that existing single family residential subdivision. It was always something we planned to access from, from Dunstable Road. It was never an option. I'll have to look and see what, or Doug and I will have to look and see what, what the text related to Stone Hill is. But we were, we were honestly trying to be sensitive to the neighbors on Stone Hill, understanding that they have, you know, a dead end residential subdivision that they've been part of for probably some time and wouldn't want to see us essentially adding to that. Certainly also then we would be very close to Dunstable Road. And so I imagine the town would want to see us connect all the way through to Dunstable Road, and this would certainly increase the dead end that's there today on Stone Hill for more than 10 lots.
Yeah, given the brook crossing, I don't know that conservation is really going to be thrilled with it, but.
Well, it's an existing crossing.
Yeah.
And Nancy, I would like to add, there, there is in fact an existing crossing there today, and there are a couple of culverts already in place. And I think the thought process was that to abandon that access from Dunstable Road and come off of Stone Hill would in fact create a much longer dead end road. And as Katie said, then in all likelihood, we'd be required to blow through out to Dunstable Road in any event as an emergency. So, you know, we thought coming in Dunstable Road would allow us to, you know, keep our neighbors on Stone Hill happy about not having a, you know, a drive through there now or cut through. And so that's how we came off of Dunstable because of the existing crossing.
You can allow to make a comment or ask a question as an abutter?
Uh, yeah, when we open it up to the public hearing, yes.
Okay.
We're close.
Thank you.
That's the only question I have at this time.
Yeah, I have one other thought, if I may. What's the story on this other right of way? I guess it goes over to property in Westford. What's anticipated there in the long run? Is there any concept of what would happen?
Well, we have, there is a sizable parcel in Westford, and it is commercially zoned. So we are looking at what are the allowed uses in that area. And I think we'll have more information for you when we meet next. I know we'll at least have more details on the proposed right of way. I know we'll at least have, uh, more details on the proposed right-of-way and, and hopefully some information on what we can and, and hope to do in the Westford part of things.
I don't have anything to add to this, but I don't know. If everybody's all set, I'll open it up to the public and see if they can have any questions.
Henry, can I, um?
Sure.
So, uh, so Attorney Duchesne, are, are you, are you suggesting that there may be a connection from Westford commercial industrial land into this subdivision road?
Yes. And it's commercial. It's not industrial. No, I'm sorry. It is industrial. It's not commercial.
And what kind, what kind of connection? Utility or?
No, we're proposing, right now, we're showing a potential, a possible 50-foot right-of-way.
For act, for vehicular access?
Yes, it would have to be a roadway.
And, uh, have you reviewed the Chumpsford zoning bylaw and you're aware of the provisions related to that?
Um, well, we have, um, and, and that's why we're not proposing a driveway. It would have to be a roadway.
Okay. Um, is that going to be part of this subdivision approval?
I believe so, yes.
We'll be showing that. And that's what I said, Evan. We'll be showing the design on that.
Okay, that's what I thought. As part of that, I would, I would like to reach out to council and discuss, not the legalities of it. But we have other, we have similar situations with Westford that I think need to, uh, be fair and equitable. So.
Evan, I'd be happy to meet with you and council to discuss this at your convenience.
I don't, I, I don't want to give the impression to the planet, Chumpsford Planning Board or the applicant that, uh, that I have any intent to hold this project hostage. But not knowing the scope and scale of an industrial development in the, in the town of Westford, per, uh, relying solely on access through Chumpsford and through a residential zone uh, is troubling to me. So I would like to, uh, work with you on that. And if we need to bring in the town of Westford. Like I said, I, I think there are other scenarios that, um, should result in something that's fair and equitable.
Happy to do that.
Henry. Oh, I'm sorry, Evan. Continue. I'm sorry.
My only other comment is on this, uh, uh, dry sewer line. Um, and while I understand the regulations have this provision in there, the provision dates back to 1997. That's over, that's over 20 years ago. And a lot has changed, um, in the last 20 years. Most recently, uh, the, the town meeting, uh, votes from, uh, October. So it's somewhat puzzling to me. It's somewhat curious to me. Depending on, on how the board views the waiver. I would also like to reach out to council and circle with engineering on this.
I think that's a good idea, Evan.
Henry, that was, can I, this is Mike Walsh. Can I ask another question?
Go for it.
I was just gonna, uh, in, in, uh, Evan, you brought it up, the subject that I was going to bring up. This being the first subdivision coming forward with the moratorium with septic. What, what is the provision for us to, what are the options? Prior to this, we, we would, prior to the moratorium, they had to hook up the sewer. Do they have to put, um, is it by the bylaw? I'm not familiar with it. Do they have to put a dry system in, including septic? Because that doesn't seem fair.
So it's not a bylaw. It's your subdivision regulations. It's, it's within the same, same regulations in which the, um, granite curbing, the sidewalks, the trees, the lighting. It's the same, same, it's the, your definitive subdivision regulations.
Okay, so it's in there, okay.
Yep, so.
So, so anyone coming forward has to put a dry system in?
Or request a waiver, correct. And the, and the board has the authority, the discretion and the authority uh, to grant those waivers. Obviously, as the board knows, the, those, the board normally, uh, relies heavily on the recommendation of the, um, engineering and DPW. Uh, again, because this is, uh, the ink hasn't even dried on the, uh, moratorium and on the, um, the bylaw revision that town meeting adopted, uh, related to, uh, the town not requiring, um, existing septics, uh, to connect. Uh, you know, I, I think this warrants just some further discussion. I can tell you that at this point, I don't think the, the, uh, the solution to sewer capacity is a near-term solution. It's certainly not a 12-month solution. Um, and it's likely a lot longer than 12 months.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Henry.
All right, Colleen, anybody in the audience want to?
Um, hi there. I, I thought the meeting started at 7:30 and I apologize if I was late to join. But, um, I am currently a resident and owner at 311 Dunstable Road. It's almost directly across from 314. And in fact, quite a lot of the property that we have is a wetlands that is directly across from it.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Can you back up just one minute and, and provide your name and address?
Sure. It's Maria White James, and I'm at 311 Dunstable Road. So actually, it's not the blue square. It's, it's directly over to the left of that. So those, tho- those are part of our wetlands? Exactly. Um, so from my understanding, am I correct in, in, in understanding that the entrance into these homes would be on the Dunstable roadside and not Stonehill?
Correct.
So, you know, my concern is again, a lot of our properties are wetlands directly across the street. And I'm concerned for not only wildlife, but also for flooding. Because I don't know if you, you could tell from, from the picture that you have up right now. Some of that water goes underneath the street and onto the other side.
Yeah.
And I am concerned about construction and not having that flow of water go over to that other side and flooding on the road and also, you know, into my home. Um, as it is, our sump pump goes quite often. And so I didn't know how you guys were handling that situation. Um, how far into the, to wetlands on that side of the street was the construction going to be held? Um.
Evan, do you have any answer to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, briefly, and Katie, jump in. Um, we're, we're not proposing any work on, uh, your side of the, the, uh, wetlands. Uh, your, your side of Dunstable Road or those wetlands in, in any event. Um, and as I think Katie could probably do a better job explaining, uh, we are required that we cannot claw, cause additional flooding or water to, to, um, to move from our side of the road to your side of the road. Um, we can't impact the off-site, uh, water flow. So we'll, we'll be controlling all of our water on our side of the road. Uh, we will be collecting it from the impervious surfaces and treating it uh, so that it's cleaned before it's, um, it recharges into the ground or goes to the wetlands, uh, on our side of the street as it is today. So there should be no, uh, impacts or changes with respect to the water flow uh, to your side of the street or your wetlands. Katie, am I on point there?
Yeah, but I think more, more importantly, we're actually, um, the culvert that's there now or is two pipes, I believe a 24-inch and a 36-inch pipe that goes under the driveway at 314. And because this is a perennial stream, um, being, um, deep brook, that we have to actually increase the size of the culvert um, to meet Massachusetts stream crossing standards. So actually, it, it's actually going to be less restricted as it flows from your property through 314 Dunstable Road, because we have to actually make that, um, it, it's being upgraded essentially from two pipes to a large culvert to, and it will allow more, um, water to pass through it and also allow animal passage through it.
I'm concerned about not only, you know, our water flowing in between that pipe, but also would there be additional water from your side, given the construction flowing back into my side as well?
No, so what, what we have to do, um, is we are required to look at, uh, pre-depost development flow rates to the wetland, um, on our side, because that's where the water goes now. It goes to our side. So the ponds, I'm not sure if you missed that part of the presentation, but we have proposed three different ponds. Um, one is referred to as a pocket wetland, which is way out front at Dunstable Road. And the other two are infiltration basins. And so we have to capture all of our increases and flows on our site and hold it and treat it and let, and basically infiltrate the water back into the ground or let it out slowly as to not increase it in the after-development condition. Um, so we had to prepare a pretty large, um, report, a stormwater management report to prove that that is what we were doing.
Thank you. That was, that was my main concern. And then also, um, if this is going to be a, a cul-de-sac, would there be, uh, will you also be construction on con- having, um, basically a walkway on Dunstable Road? Because right now, we don't have any, um, any sidewalks. So will that be added to Dunstable Road or just the street that you're building?
So right now, it's a requirement to do it on the street that we're building. And we're requesting a waiver to just do it on one side of the street that we're building, um, based on the subdivision rules and regulations for the town. Um, but we wouldn't plan on putting one on Dunstable, um, because as you said, there's no place to connect it to.
Thank you for your answers. I appreciate that.
All right, anybody else?
May I ask a, a question? My name's Christine Urban, and I'm at 294 Dunstable. Nancy, I believe it was, asked about the access at Stonehill, at the Stonehill side up there. And, uh, that's my concern, is that that end of the property, on that side of the property, that's a major wildlife trail. Are you required to make any provision for that, or are you making any provision or buffer? I mean, we're talking deer, bear. We're not talking, you know, bunnies. We're talking large wildlife that moves.
Yeah, we had a, we had a bear just the other day, exactly, a deer.
A lot of wildlife that moves through there. What kind of buffer is provided for, for that?
Um, they are not, we don't even have the full set of plans yet. We, you know, we're still going to try to figure out what they're doing with Westford and stuff, too. This is just a very preliminary hearing. They're not build, they're not planning on joining the roads together. Um, so it's.
Well, I assume.
Yeah, we're still very preliminary, Lana, right? We, they got another five-acre parcel they're talking about there in Westford and stuff, too. So we still have a little ways to go on this. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none.
So, Henry, I just want to clarify for the board and the, in the public and just make sure we're on the same page. The development in Westford will not, well, we have no jurisdiction on that.
I understand.
How, however, you know, I think either we're going to do it as part of the planning board process or we're going to do it offline. Scope and scale is, is relevant, because this is being proposed as a minor, a minor street in Chumpsford to serve six single-family homes. However, the applicant is, has indicated that it is going to be an extension serving industrial land, I think it was five acres. I don't know how much of it is developable, in Westford. So that directly affects the road in Chumpsford. That's why, that's one of the reasons why I want to circle with engineering council and the applicant and, in the fire department.
I, I, I hear what you're saying 100%. I, I, I agree. We, we have got a long way to go.
And when I report back to the board, we, the board will know what its legal jurisdiction is. Depending on that legal jurisdiction, yeah, we may need to bring in, bring in Westford and have a, have a, have a, uh, have an offline conversation with the town of Westford. Uh, my, my, my sensitivity is that this is not something that we've dealt with in the past, uh, at least with the planning board or myself. Um, but I think it's something that we need to, um, we need to explore all options, uh, and be aware of what our, what our legal, um, thresholds are. So, so I'll look into that and I'll report back to the board.
Okay. Seeing how there's nobody else in the audience. When's our next meeting? December 9th? Colleen?
Yes, it is.
I would, uh, look for a motion to, uh, continue this on December 9th.
Ooh.
We have a second.
Second.
I got, Tim was the second, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike Walsh?
Aye.
I already saw you, Mike raised back. Hank?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Chairman and members of the board, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 9th.
Hey. Um, do we have some meeting minutes to go over here? Did I look at? Anybody have any questions about the meeting minutes for 10:28, 20?
Make a motion to accept a meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, um, I guess. Does anybody have anything to discuss about town meeting? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That was you.